Recording in progress.
Okay, I'm gonna call this workshop to order. It's August 31st at 9:00 a.m. This is the City of Holiday Island Workshop with the subject being business licenses. We don't necessarily need to take roll because we're not gonna vote on anything, but I guess for the record, we can call roll here. Wes, you wanna do that?
Sure.
Councilmember Dumas?
Here.
Councilmember Elwood?
Here.
Councilmember Graves? Excuse?
She's on Zoom.
Oh, she's on, okay. Okay, Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Oh, Councilmember Coon?
Here.
Councilmember Pittman?
Here.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor?
I'm here.
Okay, everyone is present then, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, again, we don't need to vote on and approve the agenda, but I will ask, does anyone have anything to add or detract or change from the agenda? If not, I do have one thing, I'm gonna sheriff, sheriff, sorry about that. Chief Yates would like to make some comments about the fire department involvement in business licensing, so we're gonna let him go first so that he can get back to work protecting the public.
Let's not use that language. Work, such a dirty word. Good morning, Council and Mayor.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning, you're here for our opportunity to speak. First of all, I want to commend you on doing your workshop session to explore the business licensing process. I've been chief at several places, and one of the towns where I was fire chief didn't really think through their business license process, and that created some snarls for the fire department. They wanted each of the new businesses, of course, to have a fire inspection. And we do periodically inspect businesses here in town to make sure they're in compliance with the fire code. But in their process of setting up the business licenses, they failed to specify that that had to be completed at a certain timeframe, and they were just handing out their business licenses willy-nilly, and then the business owner would find out a month later, I was supposed to have a fire inspection. And then they had a fire inspection, might have correct them on a fire extinguisher or an exit light or something like that, and then there was a lot of animosity that fed back to the city because they never told us we had to do this. So I would like to make a recommendation that should the City of Holiday Island adopt a business license process, the business license itself, to include one of the requirements that before a business license is issued, the respective business must have successfully passed a fire inspection, either conducted by the fire department, or by code enforcement, or by the building city inspector. That way it keeps everybody on the same page in regard to state and local rules and regulations, and would cut down on some of the confusion. I would also recommend that should you adopt that as part of the process, that encourage businesses to be grandfathered in. We, again, periodically inspect the businesses in town to make sure they're in compliance with fire code. I don't see it putting a burden on them to have to have two inspections when they just may have had one a month prior or a year prior. So that's what I wanted to bring before you, that should you consider a process, please include the requirement of a successful fire inspection passed before issuing the business license. What about like home businesses? I would not include those in the process. From a personal standpoint, I love toy trains, and in my basement, I fix up and resell toy trains. Some people could construe that as a business. I don't see a reason for us as a fire department to be going into people's homes trying to dictate what they're doing in one room or one part of their basement in their home. I think that's overstepping our bounds and the attention of the law. I'm very worried to places open to the public.
What about STRs?
STRs.
Short-term rentals?
I have mixed emotions on that. At the current time, we don't inspect rental properties at all because they aren't very well addressed in the fire code. So for apartment buildings, long-term rentals, we do no inspections. Now we hesitate to take on short-term rental programs as well, unless that's something the city feels that we need to due to negligence or issues.
It's a real bone of contention.
I can see that.
Some places are trying to do it, and others are not.
What type of business exactly would you, you want us to consider doing that?
Any business that's open to the public where the public has free access in and out. Therefore, if there's a fire in the business, not only are the workers, the owner protected, but any guests or clients are protected as well.
Is there a, do you have a, an inspection checklist of things that you look for when you go into a business?
Yes, sir, we have a rather long page, but it covers everything from are the exits uncluttered, are the fire extinguishers hung in view, are they the right height, is there exit lighting, is there mercy exits fully barred, are they stringing extension cords together trying to power a refrigerator? We see that.
What's wrong with that?
It's a little too much pull on little extension cords, but it covers those types of things. It doesn't get deep into like construction, interior firewalls, it's more or less for the public's safety.
You didn't recommend any inspections on short-term rentals, rentals at all per se. Would you have a problem with it if we decided to, based on a complaint type of thing? In other words, we're not gonna, you can have a business license, we use this business license, but then any inspection would be the result of a complaint?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, keep going. Keep going. This is a private conversation.
Oh, okay. You got the gist, so if we did that, I don't know what anybody else thinks, but if we did that, it would probably operate off of complaints rather than initial?
I think it would be a very nice way of handling it, rather than having inspection every one, if there's a complaint, myself and the fire department, one of our inspectors or code enforcement officer from the city can investigate that complaint. I think that would be a very smooth way of handling it.
Or if they actually have a fire, and then they go back into business?
True.
Something like that, okay.
In the, I'm still, I'm thinking in terms of what are we enforcing by doing the inspection? You know, you said you have a checklist, and that's good because we could get a copy of that checklist, and if somebody says, I wanna get, you know, I'm thinking about opening up a business, you know, I'm gonna be renting this location, we could hand them that checklist and say, before you even apply, you know, make sure that your facility, you know, complies with this, with everything on the checklist. Is that supported by the Arkansas Fire Protection Code and stuff like that?
Yes, a lot of the easy things such as the fire extinguishers, exit lighting, don't block exits, all of those are, but the way the Arkansas Fire Code is written, the requirements change based on the type of business it's going to be. Some of the requirements will shift. What I would recommend, and we've done this in previous cities, if a business owner wants to set up shop and they're going to be making wax candles to sell, then we need to inspect their equipment ahead of time before they get going, oh no, you're gonna need another plug here, you know, you can't put this heater underneath this fixture, it's too close. Just some of the things to help them get started before they spend money and then end up having to go back and punt. And I think that that is a very goodwill part of the city and inspectors to help people get started from the get-go so they don't have to back up and spend extra money.
Okay. When you said you're inspecting businesses currently in Holiday Island, is that by request? Or is it, or do you take that upon yourself as the fire chief to impose inspections on people?
Yes, we try to periodically inspect each business in the city to make sure that nothing has changed, that because business owners change, employees change, some of the things that previous employees knew, they're gone now, so new employees don't know, you can't string extension cords or block exits, certainly you have to leave an exit door unlocked. So we try to periodically hit each business and just make sure they're up to code and help them along, answer any questions they have.
Do you look at occupancy?
Do that in conjunction with the code enforcement and the building inspector, yes, we were discussing occupancy case yesterday as a matter of fact. Yes, sir.
Do you have an implied authority to walk into someone's business because they are in Arkansas? I mean, how is it you can knock on the door and I wanna check your electrical or your whatever?
Because we are the, and I think it's called the authority having jurisdiction is the term that's applied to us. We are the extension arm of the Arkansas Fire Code.
Okay.
So we can go into the business and say, here's the fire code you must comply with. If the business says, well, you don't have the authority, then our next recourse is we go through our process of, here's a letter saying that we want the correction. Should they fail, since our authority is not very well spelled out now that we've become a city, our next issue is that we go, or the next step is that we actually go to the state and say, we have a problem with the business that won't comply, and the state will send a fire marshal from the state to ensure compliance.
Okay, so can we resolve that if the city gives you the authority to inspect businesses? Is that what we have to do to make it easier?
That would clarify the matter considerably now that we've become a city.
Okay.
And then the enforcement would be revoking the business license?
Right.
And we would, that should be covered in the ordinance?
Yep.
Okay.
Dan, I don't wanna make this hard on people in business, especially starting out. It takes a lot of money, a lot of new businesses fail, but you want to make sure that they are safe and in compliance with the spirit of the law.
Right.
And if I can give any assistance to the city as you guys move along with the ordinances and anything related to public safety or fire, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, I'll help, and if I don't know, I'll send your document for you. All right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We don't have sound.
We don't have sound, we're coming out or being recorded?
I would assume being recorded.
Is the microphone there gone?
Yes.
Okay.
It's turned on, and then it's been, it was turned on and it stopped, so then I switched it, came back on from it, and now we're stuck, and so Ken and I have been conversing.
Sure. How about test, let's just run a test. Okay, the auto's working. Test one, two, three, the microphone's working.
Freeze, the microphone's working.
Okay, so I don't know why it just didn't pan on her end.
Nope, now it's started working again.
Okay.
But the video's frozen.
I think it's the internet.
Yeah, I agree.
It's the app trying to get through on the internet.
But just a couple of opening statements. We've had, we've had a workshop on business licenses before, we've had a workshop on short-term rentals, at least one or two workshops, and we've accomplished a lot, we've established a lot of good information, but I also feel like we keep, we're kind of talking ourselves in a circle, that, you know, we need business licenses, but no, let's not do business licenses now, let's do, let's focus on short-term rentals, and then we start talking about short-term rentals, and then we say, well, maybe short-term rentals should just be, you know, part of the business licensing process, and, you know, so we keep kind of talking around in circles, and, you know, one output for this workshop, at the very, very least, I think should be for us to nail that down. Are we going to have one business license where short-term rentals is just one type of business license? Or are we going to have two licensing systems where a short-term rental will have to get a business license under the business license ordinance, and then also get a short-term rental license under the short-term rental ordinance? So, you know, if we could at the very least nail that down. One of the things that came up in prior workshops also was that, you know, if we're gonna pass an ordinance for the city, we need to have a good reason for it. The popular reason on Facebook is to generate revenue, and that is not our objective in any ordinance we pass. In fact, it probably isn't even legal to pass an ordinance for the specific purpose of generating revenue unless it's a taxing ordinance, and there are laws governing that. So I tried to do a little brainstorming, and we can add to this, but I think that business licensing is important because it ensures that businesses operate legally and safely, it protects the public's health and safety, and holds companies accountable for their actions and their behavior. A registry of businesses allows for better communication between the city and the businesses should the city need to communicate on pending issues. A business registry assists the city in evaluating the economic health of the city and in determining the needs and opportunities, strengths and weaknesses of the business environment. And then I pulled this last paragraph right out of the tiny-town ordinance, it says, in order to anticipate the needs of emergency personnel, to protect the city water system from contamination resulting from cross-contamination or cross-connections, to provide more efficient fire protection, identify the locations of all commercial operations, and determine the legality of business activities, a license shall here and after be required, blah, blah, blah. So, you know, it kind of says the same thing. I don't know that there's that much of a concern about contaminating the water system because there's cross-contamination requirements or prevention requirements in ICIDS, Water Connection Ordinance, and in our building code. However, I think the sewer system is highly suspect to contamination from some business activity that we're not aware of, that might be dumping hazardous materials into the sewer system. And so I think that could be added as a reason for needing a business registry and licensing process. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
You've said everything that I've personally.
Okay.
My thought is if, as long as it's a revenue neutral, we need to identify what the costs are, and make an assessment to how many licenses and how it's gonna be allocated so that we can do our best to make sure it's revenue neutral.
Revenue neutral is the key. I don't think we want to penalize anybody for business, but it's important for planning. I guess that's part of the thing you went in here, but I guess to Dan's original end, when he started, since we've talked all around this subject, is there kind of a consensus now that we're going to have short-term rentals included in a business license and forget this whole thing about a COP?
A separate STR.
I don't think they need both.
The CUP, the conditional use permit, is a separate issue, and it always will be a separate issue because it's in our zoning ordinance, that a short-term rental, operating a short-term rental in an R1 residential area requires a conditional use permit. So that process is going to have to be satisfied, no matter what we do with licensing. The, but that doesn't, that, you know, that results in a conditional use permit, but not a form of a business license or an operating license. So really, I think at one time, we were almost talking about three different requirements, the CUP, the, you know, a business license specifically for short-term rentals, and then the general business licenses.
All right, okay.
Okay, well, my concern would be, you know, and I haven't read our CUP ordinances, I don't wanna have to, do they have to pay to get the CUP? And then they have to pay to get the business license? I don't think we should double-hit them.
Yeah, well, first of all, a CUP is, I did have the section of our zoning ordinance in one of the documents, but the CUP application process, as it stands right now, I believe is a $325 fee.
No, CUP is $100.
Oh, okay.
And that's to cover our publication expense and other incidentals we may have, some attorney's questions or what have you, but it's only $100.
Does it require a public hearing?
Yes. That's why we have conditional use permits.
And that's a one-time thing? So they pay that, and then they get the CUP, and then this business licensing would be every year, we would renew your license?
Right.
Okay.
The revenue neutral kind of bothers me a little bit.
I don't, I don't think we ought to dwell on that. I mean, I, I mean, there's not enough revenue here to, to, for revenue.
There might be a few, I listed all the businesses we have here, it could have enough.
I mean, there are businesses that have locations in other states, cities, or whatever, that pay, you know, a lot more than a nominal fee, and, I mean, if you're considering what to charge, I mean, should we include the cost of the fire department? I mean, we are somewhat.
I think you're just, you're trying to make a statement, be revenue neutral, I think you're just opening a can of worms.
I think you need, we need to set fair and reasonable, but not try to manipulate where we don't, we don't make any revenue or go in the hole doing it.
Well, there's a certain amount of cost involved with going through this licensing process and checking on it, and even, I mean, the, I don't know, I don't know what, I, we're just going off of another tangent.
My, my take on it is that even for the largest of businesses here in Holiday Island, the, the cost of providing a business license and maintaining a business registry is going to be nominal. I don't know that there's any way of nailing down, you know, within 10% what the cost of that's gonna be, but it's gonna be nominal, so the fee, in my opinion, should be nominal. And I think if you look at the proposed fees that I have in here, they're very nominal, they're 20, 20, $20, $25, $35. And they weren't that far out of line with what Fayetteville's fees were, they, other than the fact that Fayetteville did, did put size conditions on it, that they had a nominal basic fee, but then it was so much extra per employee, and, and they had a long section in their ordinance for determining, you know, how many employees, average employees a particular business had, but I didn't think we needed to do that.
That almost seems to be approaching taxing. I mean, when you're charging so much per employee, that's getting out of the, what we're, I don't know, what, you know, what's the issue with how many employees they got? Well, that's when you're charging more for this many and more, well, I know, but why?
It implies that the bigger you are, the more it costs to provide that business licensing, you know, service to the community.
But it doesn't really, does it? I mean, that's always right.
I don't think it does in our situation here, because even our biggest employer probably doesn't have 50 employees.
You get into issues, you know, most of them are gonna have a whole bunch of part-time employees, just have to keep it minimal as we can. I don't think it's anything to do with the cost.
We can always revisit that.
We don't want to discourage those services.
I think the hardest pill to swallow for people is going to be having to get a conditional use permit, you know, that $100 upfront, but, you know, there is real costs associated with that because we have to conduct a public hearing, which means we have to pay for advertising in the newspaper, we have to post signs and stuff like that, so, that's, you know, we're just trying to recover our costs there. And the cost of advertising or putting out the public notices is $60?
Right, and the signs are about 12 bucks for a pair of them, so.
Well, except today, we're just talking about business licensing, that's another, that's another, another day.
So short-term rentals would be the only business that has to go through the CUP process as well as the business licensing?
I, I don't think I wanna agree to that as a blanket statement, because we'd have to go through our zoning ordinance table and see what kind of businesses are listed in the table as being conditional.
Gotcha.
I know, looking at the one for Eureka, they have a three-page listing, and they have different amounts for, you know, I don't think, we're not in that, but I would strongly recommend the issue with the number of employees being taken out of there because of, you say, involved with code enforcement and all kinds of crap.
The Tiny Town and Fayetteville Business Licensing Ordinances are both eight pages long, the Eureka Springs one is 50 pages long, so.
Well, the one that you got in here has to do with franchises, the one I got from the city clerk is pretty specific and is pretty short.
The Fayetteville is 97 pages long, they have chapter 110 through 118, and what you copied was 118, but they talk about vehicle-related licenses, door-to-door solicitation, pawnbrokers, food sales, rock quarries, amusement, alcohol, so it's 97 pages in entirety.
Okay, well, I didn't capture it all.
Sure.
The reason, the reason I want to stay with STRs is, it's simple, and now we're off the whole ballgame.
Well, we decided not to do that, Ken, so.
Yeah.
I know when you said, or somebody said we weren't gonna do it.
Well, we just decided as a board, you were here.
No, I didn't.
So where do we want to go from here? Do we want to walk through the draft ordinance that I?
I think that's, which one's the draft one?
The one that says business registry and licenses, the copy, I emailed it yesterday afternoon.
Yeah, you talked about it looks like this, Ken.
Yeah, the first page would have been a blank ordinance page.
I'm looking at the workshop, did you make the workshop documents?
Yeah, it's not that big.
It might not have made it into the workshop documents because I didn't.
They made the draft business license, that's one.
There you go. Yeah.
Eight pages. 220 XXX?
Yes, sir. That's the document.
If we want to go through there, each of us make comments at what we.
Yeah, if you've already gone through it and have.
Yeah, if you've already gone through it and you just want to make comments, we can go along. go along the room.
Yeah.
So, Pat, you want to go first?
Not particularly, why? Because I forgot where it was. I was looking, I'm looking back through.
Ken, you want to go first?
The only part I wanted to talk about is where, and I don't know where it is, I can't find it. I did not have 10% in each, where?
Where did it start?
Somewhere down here, it says, we're going to limit it, businesses to 10% of the.
Yes, there was, there were five.
And I think that would be, since we have things grouped, I would rather consider going with, for the whole of Ireland, maybe 150, you know, a number for each type of thing rather than in a specific area.
Yeah, I, I can't, this was.
And I can't find it right now, I just.
It's on page five.
Bullet 16?
16A.
Density for type-two short-term rentals, more than 10% of.
Yeah, that's the part I did.
And, and 10% may not be the, the correct percent, but there was something similar to that in the Fayetteville ordinance, that they had, they had two limits. One was, I think, total in the whole city, and then the second one was concentration, no more than so many in a certain area. And I got to thinking, maybe that's more important to us than how many there are in total.
Right.
If I live, you know, I live in unit 11.
So, we're talking about by ward? Is that what you mean by?
Well, I was thinking by unit.
By unit.
By unit in Holiday Island. I, I live in unit 11. I don't think I'd want to see 80% of the houses in my unit be short-term rentals.
No, not in.
No, 90% is a better number.
But, but, but when you're down in here, a unit, 10% may not mean anything. I mean, if you're talking about.
Right, that's why they could be variable, by unit.
By unit.
Do you want to go through it? Unit by unit, or can we get by with saying 150 for the whole of Holiday Island and a density of no more than X percent?
So many per unit.
Don't be, don't be difficult, it's still more than. I'm just thinking, the different parts, we'd have to go through each unit.
Yeah.
And say, 50% is appropriate here, 10% is appropriate up by the mayor's house, you know, do you want to do that?
In, in the last, in the last workshop, we said, we all, we all agreed, I thought, that we don't need to put a cap on Holiday Island in total, that market saturation will take care of that. We don't have to worry about over-populating Holiday Island with short-term rentals.
I thought.
But I did, I did think that it might be, it might be worth a look, you know, a look at, just to make sure that we don't have concentrations of them. As an example, across, right across the street here, on one street, on one street, they're almost all VRBOs now, and when they're all rented, you know, the streets parked full, the driveways are parked full.
Yeah.
There's nothing but vehicles up and down the, the block.
Yeah.
And the people that are permanent residents there have, basically have given up their whole neighborhood.
Yeah.
To short-term rentals. So, you know, I think there, there could be some advantage to saying X number by, you know, X, a certain concentration limit. I don't know what the right number is.
Well, I'm just thinking, how much work would that be? Because we're, we're talking about, like, right across the street, which started part of this conversation, they're all going to be grandfathered in. We can't go in and say 50% saturation, where they're now at 70%.
Well, that, that would just mean.
This is only going to be for new, new applicants, so if somebody else came over there, they would say, you can't, or you can't operate because we've already.
It would cap it, it would cap it.
And I like that idea, I just don't know in practicality how we're going to do that.
Well, it's easy to count the number of lots in a unit, that's no sweat. So, you just got to look at the map and see how it's spread out and.
But we don't currently even know how many short-term rentals we have.
Which is the point of business, right?
I know.
Well.
That's why I'm kidding.
Yeah.
So, do we have to figure out what we have and then go back and say what the saturation is?
And then, is that an issue of planning? Is that a zoning ordinance that we have to pass? If that's the case, it'd be a great place, at least to have a public hearing for the city council to say, in unit 117, we're going to allow 15. Is that okay with the public? You know, that kind of question should be presented.
That, that would be lovely, but nobody will come from unit 117 to our.
Well, I'm here.
That's, that's always a different issue.
All right.
I, I just, I, when I saw that, I'm just not sure how we want to approach that, you know, certainly not, well, you understand where I'm coming from.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to state to the record that, I mean, we're headed where the intent of the workshop, in my mind, wasn't to try to nail down VRBO rules, but we dismissed the business license and say, we don't want to charge anything, it'll be an undue burden, and moved on to, to try to solve the short-term rental issue.
Well, they're, they're kind of tied together if we decide now to.
Okay, then why not put restaurants in there or grocery stores and define them? I mean, the VRBO thing is, is two-thirds of the, the business license ordinance. I mean, either we.
I see, I, I see exactly what you're saying, Jerry. The thing is, you know, with, with the short-term rentals and VRBOs and all that, there are certain things we need them to do, that we don't need a grocery store.
I, I understand that, but.
So.
Well, the bottom line is, we don't want to, we don't want to tackle this whole thing at one time and end up with an 80-page document like other cities.
Well, if it needs to, if it needs to be an 80-page document.
Then it should be.
I mean, Jesus, we had 75-page documents on the planning commission, that's because it's what it required.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know, this ain't easy.
No, that's for sure.
So, anyway.
So, you believe that ordinance has, has, Dan drew it up?
I, I don't have any problem with that. I don't think it ought to be that, and I, I think, you know, we need to pay more attention to the business licenses. You know, sure, we, a lot of businesses can be grandfathered in.
Yeah.
But if, you know, we've said it several times, again, with planning commission, those land looks ahead, is that, you know, we're not doing this for today. I mean, we're setting the groundwork, I mean, we invented all this from scratch, since 2020, everything. I mean, we had $12 in the bank, didn't even have a bank account.
Right.
And, and, you know, so.
Yeah, I'm with you.
That's just my point. And if, if that's the direction we want to go, that we just want to, you know, have a paper trail of business licenses and charge $20 to Wes for a one-man operation or, and Sunfest, it's got, you know, 20 employees? I don't think that's what we want to do.
Okay, I'm not understanding your, where you're coming from on that. So, Sunfest should, as, doing business here, they should be required to have a business license for it, and then Wes is an individual who has a business out of his home.
Do we charge them both $20? Or 25, whatever the non-home fee is?
Yeah.
No.
So, our justification is the larger the business, the more they should pay.
Well, that's what other cities do.
I'm with it, I understand what you're saying.
Well, it goes back to the, the philosophy, what, what is the point of this? Initially, it's not to tax anybody, it's not to, to.
But it also shouldn't be the, the motive being not to piss people off.
No, but, but we're just trying to initially establish what we've got, how many we've got, and where they've got, and all we want is enough money to cover the cost of doing that, not, I, I understand that Food Fest is, you know, a thousand times bigger than Wes, but we're just trying to, from this point in time, identify all of them, and it may not be fair that we're charging him $20 and then $20, but all, all we're covering the cost of is making a register of all the businesses we've got, and that's a beginning, you know, and, and it's a particular urgency right now. The short-term rental is something that we've identified, seemingly, we've identified as something that needs immediate attention. We can't attend everything all at one time, we've, we've done quite a bit in the last two and a half, three years, and, and it's not perfect, and I understand your point exactly, I don't disagree with you, I just think, what are we trying to accomplish right now? If that's just a list of a registry of businesses we have for planning and other things, then $20 is enough for everybody. I mean, that establishes a start, and I understand, Jerry, I don't, I don't dismiss what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, I just think that's kind of a big, a big chunk to try to hide it one time.
Well, that's.
I know, you don't want to spend another.
It should then raise, when we call it workshop. I mean, we said then that we were going to concentrate on business licenses.
Right.
And that's fine, I mean, I just won't vote, but if everybody's satisfied with nominal fees and whatnot, I don't know.
Are we going to have to have any other inspections other than the, than the fire inspection for these businesses' licenses? I don't think we're going to have any inspections other than all complaints, are we, unless.
Well, again, that, we, we did that, but not knowing that the fire department does the inspections.
Well, I knew they were doing them, but I didn't.
Well, okay.
But, you know.
To Dan's point, if, if someone wants to apply for a license and they call themselves XYZ Incorporated, and they just come in and give the fee of 20 bucks and give them a piece of paper to conduct business, XYZ Incorporated, you have no clue what they do.
Mm-hmm.
Do they have a storefront, they have a, a public access, maybe we need to walk through the door and find out what kind of business they're doing, to Dan's point, so we can protect the sewer system, that they aren't doing something in the back room and dumping battery acid down the drain.
I don't disagree with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have to do some investigation, we can't just hand out paperwork with a $20 bill attached to it.
Right, right.
Well, that's, that's, that's what this is going to do.
Right. And then, the point that we made after we had the storm, having a business license for someone to conduct business to put new roofs on houses might protect certain residents from the fly-by-nights. You know, that would be an important reason to know what kind of business they're doing and, you know, what, what background do they have, what's their tax ID? I don't know, what kind of investigation we need to do. That's my concern in this community, we have a lot of vulnerable people when we have a weather event. Oh, man, I'm glad you're here. Here's my check for $2,000.
We had, we had probably three tornadoes, and roofing companies would come from Texas.
Right.
Arkansas and all over, and they had to come get a business license. They wanted $20.
And, you know, that, well, that's something that's not addressed right now, and this ordinance, as it was drafted, and it was something I was going to bring up, that, as drafted, this says that if you have a physical address in Holiday Island, you need a business license. So, this does not address, you know, XYZ Roofing Company that comes in from South Texas.
It should.
You know, first time there's a hailstorm, so.
Yeah, we've, we've got work to do to, to come up with who does businesses that don't reside here and how do you.
But with that said, with that said, I.
If they're licensed someplace else in Arkansas, we have to recognize it.
I don't know that, I don't know that, I don't know that I've seen any other city ordinance, business licensing ordinance, and obviously, I haven't done my research that thoroughly, but I don't, I haven't seen anything in any other ordinances that covered that situation. And I do believe that there's something in the Arkansas code that says that if you're licensed to do business in a city in Arkansas, then other cities have to recognize that license.
I think there is, I can't remember where it was found, and also, this is kind of a tangent, but having worked for an insurance company, which works a little differently, anytime there's a storm, you can send an adjuster from any place in the world, if they've got an adjuster's license in Oklahoma, Florida automatically says you have a temporary one with no west extra fee. So, that's how, that's handled, we'd handle it the same way. We have a storm, like Dan says, if they're already in, registered in a town in Arkansas, we have to recognize it, but we'd have to come up with some way to, a temporary license, because they're not doing business in here permanently, they're only doing business in here for two weeks, and that's certainly a valid concern, but that's not addressed in this, and I think that could be a separate, I mean, it's, it's important, I don't know how to address it.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, I think it'll be a takeaway from the workshop, is that we're going to have to see how other cities address that.
If nothing else, out of this workshop, we're going to figure out, we've got a lot more work to do, and so.
Mm-hmm. I mean, there, to some extent, in the situation we're talking about, professional licensing protects the public a little bit. You, you know, you can't do business, as a contractor, you can't do business in Arkansas unless you're a licensed contractor in Arkansas. You can't be an electrician from, you know, a licensed electrician in Illinois and do electrical work in Arkansas, you have to be licensed in Arkansas. However, there's a dollar limit on that, at least for contractors, for construction contractors, that if it's under, I believe it's $25,000, you don't need to have a contractor's license. So, you know, if somebody comes in and wants to do a $13,000 roofing job, they probably wouldn't be required to have a contractor's license, so I don't know, you know, how to deal with, with that, but.
I don't even know how to do diligence on that, if somebody comes from, from Texas who wants a temporary permit to do business here, do we have the, do we have a way to check them out and?
Well, I, so, for this workshop, I think we should concentrate on.
Yeah, we're getting outside of the scope.
Resident businesses.
Yeah, we need to.
And see if this.
We need to keep the scope of this and.
I'm looking at Fayetteville's here, and it looks like it only covers businesses physically located in Fayetteville.
Right, and that's what we need to concentrate on.
That's what I basically copied.
Keep the scope there, and the other, we have to deal with separately. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, what is, what is missing from here that everybody thinks we need to put in? Or vice versa? Things here that you don't think should be there?
One question that I had is back to this, and the discussion of the 10%, when you look at 16A on page five, it says, it just says, more than 10% of all dwelling units.
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
So, what does that mean? So, if you have more than 10%, so it's 15%, it's 20, it seems like it ought to say, there shall be no more than 10%.
Yeah, I think the word no in the beginning of the sentence is, no more than 10% of all dwelling.
Right.
But is that valid? You know, is that percentage okay, or?
I don't know, that's.
When you think that.
Way over there in certain body areas, already.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Now, there's nothing we can do about that's already there, we can.
Yeah, that would just be, that would just mean there's, there'd be a cap on that unit until X number of, of permits drop out.
Yeah.
But that's the way it is in Eureka Springs right now, they have, they have a moratorium on issuing CUPs, and the only way you can get one is if you're on a list and your name comes up as existing ones drop out.
Are we going to tie that in with zoning somehow?
What?
Are we going to tie that in with zoning somehow? Like 10% of a dwelling in a plotted unit, zone R1?
Well, in the, in the process of someone bringing in application, I would probably say to them, well, you're in unit 117, we're already exceeding the limit, your application would be futile, it would be turned down for that technical reason. You can spend $100 and come and do it, but you'll probably be turned down technically.
Yeah.
What if it's short-term rentals in an R3? Is that going to make a difference? Does it matter? I mean, I'm thinking. I mean, I'm thinking of what I rented on vacation last year, which probably had one building was all Airbnbs, and it was 20 stories tall with probably 50 or 60 units in one building. We don't have that situation here, but, but that's what I mean. Do we need to tie that with zoning? 10% up where Dan lives would be fairly saturated. 10% someplace else. I don't know. I think I'm confused.
Well, maybe the thought in this is that it's fair and equitable. It's the same percentage to all units. So you're treating all units the same. So if we're concerned about a concentration in a certain unit to be too high, we need to set the limit at that for all units.
Well, it is.
Yeah.
It is in this statement.
In this statement, yeah.
Because, you know, we discussed a few minutes ago, it might be different in a different part of the community than one other part.
I would think 10% you probably exceeded the limit several areas.
May have. But what we don't, we don't know the number yet.
Well, that's where we started.
Right.
This whole Dan issue is trying to find out how many we have. And we... I guess a little bit from there.
So how do we go forward?
The, the density issue is going to require more, more thought, yeah. Pulling together.
Well, essentially, it's almost a density issue we have to tackle after we figure out what we've got now.
No.
Don't we? Yes.
What we have now may be unacceptable. And it is to certain people right now.
I know, including me. But I have no clue what we've got right now. We might have 10% in my neighborhood. I don't think so, but who would know? Because I've got a couple of houses, I think by us, that are probably short-term rentals, but I don't even know if they are or not.
So we're going to get something on the books?
Well, I know, I know. But I'm just saying it's almost a circular...
Got to start somewhere.
Well, start someplace. I don't, I just, I'm not, I'm not sure how we want to approach it at this point in time.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not totally in agreement that what we have now has anything to do with it. What, because that's, that's kind of like, you know, making a plan after the fact. You want to make a plan before the fact. And if what, if what we have right now isn't compatible with that plan, then over time, it will come into compliance. But, but I do, I do agree that it's, it's a complicated issue from the standpoint that not all neighborhoods are created equal. And what may be perfectly acceptable for the unit that the timeshares are in may be totally unacceptable for the unit that I live in. And so, we're going to have to do some more investigation to see what, you know, what, what the density potential would be in, in what we have today.
I don't, we're looking at this. I don't see anything in there on the requirement for the short-term trash disposal.
Yeah.
Which is, one of the issues we started this for was, you know, was to be able so we could actually enforce the trash ordinance.
Well, the part of the business license is to say you have to comply with all ordinances within the city.
Yeah.
And the trash ordinance is one of those ordinances.
Well, the Fayetteville ordinance dealt with that by saying that if people didn't pay for their, if people violated the business ordinance, their utilities would be cut off, their sewer, their water, their trash collection would be discontinued. And we don't have that luxury here. But I agree with Ken that, you know, we, one of the things that I want, wanted to accomplish was to, you know, upfront confirm that they had a plan for getting rid of their trash in an acceptable manner.
You know, I think in our trash ordinance, it states something about the VRDOs or whatever you call them, that they had to have a, you know, a designated dumpster that they...
If they were, if they were hiring, if, if, if they were streamlining trash from several locations into one location, that had to be a dumpster located in Holiday Island that they couldn't, they couldn't gather up all the trash bags and take them to Eureka Springs or something. That's, that's one problem. But I think the bigger problem that we have in reality is the fact that, you know, they, the people, the renters move out on Sunday afternoon, and they leave overflowing trash cans sit in the driveway by the, by the garage door. And it sits there until trash collection day on Thursday.
I, you know, this is a bare bones. And if we got it, I don't see any, any way that we're going to pass something that's going to be totally perfect the first time around. But I'd like to see us do something. We've been working with this, I think, about four months now, five months. I think we could take this and build on it. I didn't have a chance to really study it.
Dan mentioned the timeshares. And I would point out that there's, that several units, I think, is not just one unit up there, but they're probably 100% short-term rentals.
Yeah.
So that needs to be considered.
Well, they got a couple of units in there that are individually owned too.
Well, but those people, I most, yeah, I agree. There, there used to be, there were two that were residential, but those people are not there anymore. And I think it's owned by others or by family members or something. And those are also rentals now.
Basically, they're operating as a motel.
No, it's a big set of buildings. They're all short-term rental by definition. You're in there for less than 30 days, right? By contract. I mean, they're all SDRs.
Yep.
Every one of them.
So, you know, when it comes to Table Rock Landing, that does raise a question. Is that one business and one business license? Is it, is it a business license per unit? The draft ordinance says that if you operate multiple businesses in the city, then each location has to have a business license. So, and does that mean that each unit in the...
In 28...
Table Rock Landing needs a business license or is Table Rock Landing a...
Or is each condo 51? Because there's 51 weeks.
Yeah, but if you're, if you're saying it's short-term and nightly rental...
Physical rental, it doesn't matter how many people can get in there.
No. What I'm saying is you've got 51 different owners potentially for each condo unit.
Why do you have 51?
That's how they do it.
Well, they have 52? That's not relevant.
One week, one week is always reserved for maintenance.
Oh, okay.
But they don't sell the one week.
Yeah.
I've always been able to resist the people who sell those...
From a city perspective though, that, that doesn't matter. That's good. You want to license that, the timeshare unit. We don't have to get crazy about how many owners are out.
If you have...
Some of them don't ever come here.
If you had a motel, it's 28 hours away, I think.
I have to, I apologize to the, to the board that I have an appointment I have to take.
It's one for hotels, but...
You're trying to capture the things that need to be added or investigated?
All my notes. I'm adding to the bottom of the document.
Consider to, how to grant authority to the chief, consider how the business represents.
We need some direction. What do we get?
Chief, aides, regimens, grandfathers, staffs, existing businesses, okay. You can, you want to add to that then?
Sure.
My notes. How are we going to deal with out-of-town businesses?
I got that at the top.
Oh, you do?
But consider how to license the contractors that have businesses established outside of Holiday Island.
All right.
Okay.
And how do we deal with, or are we going to deal with the density issue?
Okay, I put that up, note under 16. Come on, Slatter, here. On 16...
Is it, have we seen any other?
I wrote, may need to consider to modify a percentage of the number within each unit density potential evaluation needed to make that determination.
Okay. And then a note on, somehow, something to do with trash.
Okay.
And then what about a note of your definition of a business that you read? Or the purpose of the business license?
Yeah, okay. I got it.
Do any of the other cities address density?
Yeah. Fayetteville, that's where I picked it up. Fayetteville did.
Most, most of them do. Hot Springs does.
What, what percentage are they using?
I can't tell you that on camera.
I think that's where I...
For all other places.
Yeah.
I think Fayetteville had, Fayetteville had an overall cap and then a unit cap. And that's where I came up with the 10%, I believe. But I'm just, you know, I'm personally...
About the mayor's statement regarding the purpose of the business license.
Okay, all right.
Again, we're dealing with...
I wonder if, I wonder if the district has, I don't, I'm not aware of that they have any regulation or anything that where they're prompted to ask questions before they hook a water meter up to a, or hook a business up to the sewer system. I know the manufacturing plants I ran, we had to take water samples every month and send them to the city or the state to be inspected. It was part of our...
And the factories I was in, we had to have a sump outside that they could come at any time and draw samples out of to see what was going out of their plant into the stream.
Yeah, we, we had the same thing, but we collected our own samples.
Yeah, we did too. We did self-testing. We did self-testing and submitted the reports.
Okay. They didn't trust us to do that.
We were just dealing with chrome.
I would suggest under Item 7F, because it asks for, the way it stated, proof of application for remittance of hotel, motel, and restaurant tax to the city of Holiday Island if applicable, and verification of sales use, hotel, motel, and restaurant taxes are current. I would suggest we get proof that they have a sales tax permit. Because if they have a permit, then they're going to have to be remitting sales taxes to the state. And that would tell, that would tell the city then. The city could verify that a business is collecting tax. And if they are to collect a city lodging tax, then we could verify that they are doing that. Because I, I would have to check, but I don't think that the state collects a local lodging tax. I'm thinking that the city has to do that.
And we don't have one, so...
And that would, you know, that would give us a way to check to see. We would know who has sales tax permit. And then we could verify that they are remitting, collecting and remitting taxes to the city of Holiday Island. Because I think that's been a problem in Eureka Springs. Collecting the tax.
Mm-hmm.
I know, I read that A and P thing.
Okay.
Just in general, when I looked at what they did in Fayetteville, they have this, well, I'll put it back in the draft. They have this big section called Business Regulations. And they have different types of businesses listed. And what we're working with is the Segment 118. I think that in the document we're working with, this whole section of short-term rental should look like one of these. Because except for the short-term rental taxes in this document, all the rest of this is generic, is general in nature. That they need to be separate documents. A separate title, a separate section. For whatever reason, Fayetteville tagged theirs on just like, you know, actually, they didn't. Their 118, and I'll pull back my, my draft. The 118 is down here is a separate section from, or it's included in their business regulations.
Right.
So...
But they don't have a separate chapter for short-term rentals.
That's true, they don't.
They, it's just embedded in the business license.
Right.
118.
But that was my point at the very beginning, that it needs to be part and parcel of all the other.
A separate title?
Yeah.
It's just, just a thought. And I don't know why they didn't incorporate as a separate chapter in their, in their regs.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's a valid question, you know, should we have added to the list? Are there other businesses that we think we should add more definition to? You know, this is basically Section 1.00 of an eventual section of, you know, the city code. Section 2.0 could deal with, you know, specific businesses. And 3.0, and 4.0, and 5.0. If we think that, you know, different businesses need more definition of how they're going to be...
Yeah, because they, you know, telecommunications. You know, we're going to do anything with the Cox Business Licensing. You know, they've got in that chapter... You know, and they've got, in that chapter, they've got, uh, five pages of, then small cell facilities and networks. So that's, that's the cell phone towers, the cell phone business. In that regulation, it's.
What about the Marina?
I think that just falls under the general heading of governmental entity. It's a, it's a part of the suburban improvement district.
In the, in the cell tower business, fourteen pages of text, so. And that, to me, you know, that, that brings up the topic, I guess I had thought about and forgotten. What are we going to do about Hy-Sid business?
It, well, basically, I think there's a statement in here.
Oh, about government.
That excludes governmental entities.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And, uh, Hy-Sid is technically a governmental entity.
Okay. Are they paying sales tax on their business?
Mm-hmm.
So they're not government? Because most governments aren't charged property tax.
They're quasi.
I know they're quasi.
I think we need to determine that because we just assume that, you know.
Okay, you want to add that for an action item?
Sure.
Determine if.
Because the Marina is rented out to a business.
Right.
Restaurant is in competition.
Yeah, yeah.
Local restaurants.
Mm-hmm.
That is, you know, your, your comment on the Marina is a specifically good one because the Marina is owned by the district, but it's operated by a business. So that probably would, would get them included in here. Whereas the golf course is operated by the district. So that may or may not be included.
Well, if they, if they make taxable sales, they have to collect tax, they're not exempt. If, if we made taxable sales in some activity, we'd have to collect tax. And I checked with our bag tags for garbage service and, um, the state told me, well, for what we're doing, we don't need a permit, but.
I think the district, I think the district does pay property tax on any revenue generating property.
Right.
Like the swimming pool, the golf course.
The golf courses, yes.
So that may be a distinction, that they're revenue generating.
Mm-hmm. It's not a government activity.
Mm-hmm. Is there sales tax on the water bill?
State.
I think there is on one of them, the water sewer, I don't remember for sure which one.
They pay.
Mm-hmm.
At seven percent, we pay seven.
Mm-hmm. Okay, what else?
Man, is that a public comment?
Sure.
It is. I see that y'all are going back and forth between a bunch of different things, but the basis of this was the business license part. The basis of business, to start, not necessarily the rules that fall between the actual permit of doing business. Um, the basis of a business license is that you can start a business. It doesn't really imply that it's business permit of what type of business that I can do. Um, I follow that all the time with restaurants, uh, in a lot of different places. And I think the, the start of this is Title Four is what I normally cover in all the other cities that I'm in. Is what's going on, and that covers a lot of different businesses. Everything from the franchise fees to the business license, everybody's doing business inside that city. Uh, and that basis isn't, isn't created here. Uh, I'm a little confused on the revenue part. If the city's not going to make revenue, how is it ever going to operate? I know that keeps on coming up over and over again, but I've heard. Uh, but if I'm just paying a fee to cover the piece of paper, why would I want that piece of paper for my business? If the city's not going to do anything with my money, then why would I want to be a part of that? Uh, the city has to make some money at some point, some revenue to do something. City currently owns no property, there's no city park, there's nothing the city could technically do for me, why would I want to regulate what I'm doing?
Yeah, most cities make their revenue off of sales tax, not off of fees.
The top five ones are sales tax, business license, franchise fees, and property tax. Those are their, every one of them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they're a big parts of it. Business license is a recurring revenue stream for a city. Franchise fees are a large part of revenue for every city in Arkansas. Uh, there are very few that do not have franchise fees, and that is a part of a business license. If utilities are not going to have those, why would I want one for my business?
If he's doing business in Little Rock or Conway or wherever he has other restaurants, with the rule you set, that if you're licensed in another city, would that just be on?
I think they're just talking about artisans when they're talking about that, like plumbers and groupers.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't have a physical presence here, they just come here to do work.
Mm-hmm.
I, I'll have to reread it, I, but I'm, that's the way I recall it.
Yeah, if I'm, like, take Atkins Refrigeration as an example out on the, out on twenty-three North. Um, they do business in every city around here. Um, I don't think the, I think the state says that they don't have to get a business license in every single city. If they have a business license to operate in Eureka Springs, that's good enough for them to operate.
I understand that.
But I think they would have if they had it set by another location.
If they had a location, if they had a, a physical presence, a, a business address in Holiday Island, and one in Eureka Springs, and one in Green Forest, they have to have a business license in each town.
Bryce, are your, are your fees in the other towns nominal charges?
They're not. They are for revenue.
They're what?
They're for revenue. Uh, my permits could be as high as a few thousand dollars. Licenses, they're hundreds. They're not thousands.
Well, I guess we can put for an action item on here. Is there, uh, is, is, does the Arkansas constitution or any Arkansas code define what, uh, how fees can be determined? You know, it's a totally different subject, but I know that Arkansas specifically passed a law that says that a city can't make more than a certain percentage of their revenue off of traffic lines.
Mm-hmm.
Because Damascus had a cop sitting out on sixty-five, um, stopping everybody that came through. And they made like eighty percent of their city revenue off of speeding tickets.
I told you we should have got a police department.
There's, there's two parables about the road to Damascus.
Well, somebody had trouble going through Damascus, didn't they? Paul? Isn't that where Paul was going to the man, on the road to Damascus?
Yeah, that's what I say, there's two parables about the road to Damascus. Don?
Uh, two comments. First of all, I'm not quite sure what you do with the, if you have a grandfathered VRVO versus new business VRVO. I, I don't know what you do with that. Uh, blue water over here, that's, that's a whole nother matter. Uh, I don't know how you, how you cap the VRVos at ten percent when you've got ninety percent of it already in, in place. So I'm, I'm confused about how you go about that. Uh, going to Wes's point about making sure that businesses have paid their taxes. Uh, I think you're opening a can of worms on that. I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying, I, I can see us having to hire auditors and accountants and have a staff of plenty to try to make sure everybody pays their taxes, because I, I don't know. It sounds like you're, you're, you're going into a can of worms there.
Yeah, I think I.
That's going to be one we would need to check with other cities, because that's, that's pretty well in just about everybody's VRVO.
Well.
Yeah, I think I read in one, in one where the, the VRVO owner was required to, to send a quarterly report to the city or something like that.
Right.
And taxes collected and paid.
I'm just thinking you're going to be adding, adding staff, whether it's yourself or Chris.
Well, unless we have an A and P tax or something involved.
Yeah.
Yeah. Those are my two comments.
What, uh, Bryce mentioned, uh, franchise fees. Did, did Hy-Sid have any franchise fees when they allowed, you know, utilities to come in here?
I don't think so.
I don't think so, I don't think there's anything on any of our bills that say franchise fee. I can think about, in Iowa, where we came from, there, I believe there was a franchise fee on cable service, and that was billed as a separate charge then on our bill. Because the cable company just turned it around and added it back to the consumer's bill.
That's usually what they did, but.
I don't think that there's anything, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that there's anything in the section of code governing suburban improvement districts that gives them authority, the authority to charge franchise fees.
Could we charge franchise fees?
Um, cities can charge franchise fees.
Would we?
Uh, it, it's on the table to consider at some point.
Well, any.
The, the, um, franchise fees on track service, I think is, you know, everybody does that. And especially, for sure, everybody in Carroll County is doing that.
But we, we didn't do a franchise when we switched to Carroll County, did we?
We didn't impose it at the time, but we put it into our ordinance that we could charge up to four percent if we wanted to. And.
We could have the next agenda.
I mean, uh, you know, it, it is a source of revenue, and, and that's something we, we need to consider going forward. Franchise fees on utilities, I'm not sure where we would stand on that because, um, the city only has the, um, the right of way on those streets or roads that have been dedicated to the city and accepted by the city. So I don't know that we would be legally, um, I don't know if it would be legal for us to charge a franchise fee on, on the easement that we, you know, that we're not granting.
Well, I don't know, franchise fees all, I mean, if you put a franchise fee on a utility, they add it to the bill and it goes back to the individual property, property owner.
I understand that, but, I mean, you know, we promised, in the beginning, we weren't going to impose any taxes and no fees, but that, I mean, that should have sailed.
Franchise fee is not tax deductible, and if, you know, if it comes that we're going to do something, I, you know, I'd rather do some tax, because at least at that point, it's identifiable and deductible.
I'd like to respond to Jerry's comment, I don't think the ship has sailed. We have a quarter of a million dollars in the bank, we're paying our bills, we're running the business of Holiday Island the way that we said we would with the turnback funds. The ship will sail the day, the day that Hy-Sid can't collect an assessment. That's when the ship will sail. Then we're up against the wall. We've got to come up with a revenue stream of four million dollars to fund the expenses of maintaining the infrastructure of Holiday Island.
But if we take advantage of, of some of that revenue producing gradually and, and not wait to build.
Well, we got.
Well, it has to do with a commitment that I made personally when I campaigned.
Well, then you voted.
I didn't say, excuse me?
Didn't you?
Right, I would vote against it. That's my point, I'm just raising the, the issue publicly.
Well, I understand that.
Um, I just, I don't see, I don't see any benefit to, you know, to the tax, uh, franchises because all it does is add to your, your individual bills.
But, I mean, that, it all starts with, you know, what, what services does the city want to provide? Which should be, you know, driven by the, by the citizens. What do they want the city to do for them? What does it cost to do that, and where's the revenue going to come from?
Right.
That's, those are the decisions that have to be made.
Right. So if, if we really need to fund a police department at six hundred thousand dollars, we need to come up with a way to do that.
Right.
If we want to spend fifty thousand dollars collecting dogs that don't belong to us, we're going to have to figure out how to do that.
Yep.
Because the issue with dogs isn't, isn't the local people letting their dogs go, it's what appears to be the dumping of dogs. They're not even our dogs.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that, you know, there's a, a compassion for animals and that kind of thing, but for the city to spend money on that, I'm, I'd rather spend the fifty grand on police. You know, hire another twenty hours a, a week for police protection.
Well.
So, anyway, you're right, we have to figure out what we need to, what we need to do to provide the services that the city and the citizens want.
Mm-hmm.
And then fund it.
Alright, back to business licenses, is there anything else that we want to add to, uh, the list of things to consider?
Uh, at, at this juncture, the licensing process that boils down to just identifying businesses, how many we got and what they are. And for a minimal cost. And, and we're not going to do any, uh, do we have anything that would tell us what type of business we wouldn't give a permit to?
Rob?
Uh, well, I'd answer that question with this, this list here to start with. This is a list of civic and commercial uses in our, in our regulations.
Okay.
These are the kinds of businesses that we have talked about and determined whether they're going to be conditional or permitted within certain zones.
Okay.
So I think that's a great list to start with, that each one of these is a business.
Well, then we need to reference that in our, in our regular ordinance then, wouldn't we?
I believe there's something in here under the, under either the application process or under the, um, pulling somebody's business permit about what, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, illegal activities and, and things like that, so. I think that there are, the, I think the reasons for denying a, a permit would be in here.
I have to go back and re, review, see anything.
At the Lynn's point, that's, that's the, that's the start of what we, you know, there may be a business that's not on that chart, but that would be initially referred to, I don't think. Since daycare, they had senior daycare.
I didn't see anything that says where you would allow anything.
Well, uh, for Ken, it's, uh, in. Well, for Ken, it's in the very top, under general businesses in the bullets of 1, 2, and 3, talk about how to define the businesses.
Well, there is, we started out trying to find out how many Airbnb's or whatever, short-term rental. So we got into business license, which I knew.
Well, again, that was the point of the workshop, Ken, to determine.
Okay, what else? If there's no other input, then I'll take this. Anybody can, we'll distribute this, the notes that, that Lynn took here. And Chris has been taking notes, she'll put out the minutes of this workshop. Anybody, you know, anybody and everybody should probably do their own investigation on some of these things. If it's a bullet point that you're interested in, do some investigation on it. I will also. And I'll update the draft ordinance accordingly and circulate it to everybody for their review. They can add or delete from it as they see fit and.
Do you have some kind of goal in mind or?
Yeah, the goal is to have an ordinance for issuing, for having a business registry and licensing.
No, I meant.
Ordinance.
Get it ready for, we're going to have another workshop on it before we try to get to our September meeting. We'll get all our input and see if we can come up with an ordinance and then maybe we don't need one.
Yeah, I'm hoping we don't need another workshop.
We are looking, trying to get it into the September meeting.
I'll try.
I would think we need to. We've dragged this puppy to the muddle a long time. It's not easy.
I was thinking on this issue of licenses, particularly for Table Rock Landing. Now, those, that, those rentals are basically operated by Table Rock Landing, not by each unit or each condo owner. So how, and I haven't looked back at this proposed ordinance, but if someone, if, if you have a manager over several units, is it the manager or the unit owners that get the licenses?
Good question, what is?
That's something we need to look at because I assume that started as a traditional timeshare, that somebody owned them and they sold weeks. But now they sell off units to individual owners. I mean, it's not what it was when, when it started.
Right.
So I think that's the start, we find out who owns what, who operates what. How you could do that.
Well, I think in reality, it is pretty much functioning as a motel.
No, because you, well, I don't know, I think there may be some people that live there permanently.
Well, there used, up here.
Yeah.
There used to be two, but I don't think there are any anymore.
Okay. Because we looked at one when we first moved here, but I haven't.
Okay. Well, we'll try to come up with a new draft here within the next week.
If we have any comments, we figure to just back to you.
Yeah.
If we can't conclude or circulate.
No.
No, don't be asking.
You can't, can't circulate it to everybody. Go through me. If I think it's a worthy idea, I'll do something with it. If not, I'll take all your ideas and. All right. What does it say on the agenda? Where are we on the agenda? Okay, I think we did the recap and the assignments. So move to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second, any discussion? The workshop is over, thank you much.